All right, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, March 27th, 2018. Call to order. And you take role. Mr. Mercer? Mr. Jones? Mr. Maltese?
Here.
Mr. Gillis? Mr. Patricus?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
I am present. You have, we haven't had a meeting for a long, long time. It's good to see you. But you have the minutes from our last meeting, which goes back to June 27th of last year. And I'll entertain a motion to approve. I'd make the motion to approve the meeting minutes. Jim?
My second.
Second, Steve. Communications, have any announcement of decision of the Village Board and previous recommendations? Do you not have any of those? Report of committees. I guess before we get into the business, I just wanted to introduce our new village administrator, Amy Ingles. She's been here for, what, two, three months now?
Yeah, since January 2nd.
So. You're welcome.
Thanks.
Welcome. Old business? Have any new business? Okay, we've got a bunch of public hearings here for rezoning, special use, and site plan. And this is all related to the request of petitioner Patel for rezoning the B3 Auto-Oriented and Service Business District upon annexation of the property located at northwest corner of I-57 in Wilmington-Piaton Road, and a recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission to the Village Board of Trustees regarding the request. And before we ask Mr. Patel to give his, to talk about his project, I wanted to just state that on all of these hearing requests and the items that we have here, we do have an appropriate legal notice that was public, about the public hearing that has been posted in the local news days prior to this public hearing in accordance with the state law. Also, if there is anybody here that is planning on speaking tonight, I would ask you to stand up and raise your right hand. And just state, "I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, so help me God."
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, so help me God.
All right, thank you. And you all have signed in? Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Patel, I want to talk about your project.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Suhas Patel. And I'm the developer who is trying to develop a project that I'm going to talk about. This is on a northwest corner of Wilmington-Piaton Road and I-57. This will be a truck stop and a hotel development. You know, the hotel is part of the Holiday Inn franchise. You know, as you can see, my business background, I'm in the business for the last 21 years and all seven businesses, including some Hilton Hotels. You know, I have an existing truck stop as well, some restaurants, subways, liquor stores. And, you know, previously had some 7-Eleven's and C.C. Pizza. So I have diversified a different background in different retail hotels and restaurants. And to talk about the project, the Truck Travel Center, you know, it will be about 18,000 square feet building, two-story. We'll have, you know, three restaurants inside. The restaurants, I think almost, you know, I'm talking right now with the Dunkin' owner as a franchise. There will be one of the drive-through Dunkin' owner restaurants. The Charlie's Philly Steak is the second one, which I already have confirmation. The Dunkin' will be confirmed in a couple of weeks, and then I'm looking for the third best fit. I think the Hot Head Burrito would be another better, you know, fit for this development, which is a, you know, partly style in the burrito wall and the burrito concept. You know, the truck stop would have, you know, the 14 gas pumps in the front and the crawl diesel pumps in the back with some parkings. You know, the building itself will have, you know, about 20 some showers for the truckers and trying to put the hot tub and the steam bath, you know, for them to get relaxed, and then the fitness center. So I'm trying to bring the hotel concept into this truck stop. So this truck stop is not just the ordinary truck stop that you see on the highway. You know, this is more than, you know, the ordinary truck stop, because any truck stop that you go, you only have like, you know, single-story, you know, the retail store, couple restaurants, and then the shower and some of the amenities. You know, I'm trying to do on a two-floor, so all the truckers will be on the second floor, you know, and then the regular cars, everybody will be, you know, served on the first floor as a retail store. You know, and then trying to bring the soft seating in a hotel type of concept so that, you know, they have their extra amenities which you don't see on ordinary truck stop. You know, so this will be like, probably one of the first that I can say that will be built, that will offer this kind of amenities for the truckers. You know, along with that, we'll have weight scale and the truck wash. And then, you know, we have about 217 overnight truck parking, and then 45 transient truck parking for people to come and use the facility and hit the road again. So, and then, you know, video gaming and, you know, the store would have nice outdoor, you know, the patio and fire pit for evening hours. So, you know, it would look lively and, you know, the restaurant and, you know, all the patrons will get benefit from that. The hotel, you know, when I created this presentation, the last time when I was here to think about the project, you know, it was a limited hotel on the cards, but I think, you know, I talked to the Intercontinental Hotel Franchise, which is part of the Holiday Inn. And, you know, there is a, you know, very well possibility that we can change that to a Holiday Inn Express. And this hotel will bring, you know, the only hotel in town, it's the first one, I would say. And it will benefit, you know, all the local communities for any hotel needs, you know, for them, their families and the guests, you know, along with, you know, the leisure travel and the highway and, you know, other businesses around. The Holiday Inn, if the Holiday Inn, you know, gets built, it will be about same 92 rooms, but will have a 60,000 square foot building, because it's a bigger footprint, you know, has a bigger meeting space, and also has, you know, some of the pool and some of the amenities, spa and pool and all that. So, you know, for probably gathering like 150 people would be possible, you know, at the Holiday Inn, you know, banquet space. It's a limited service, so there is no one-site cooking or anything like that. We'll be just serving the breakfast. And then, you know, everything else that comes with the hotel, you know, the rooms, you know, different types of rooms, you know, and different, you know, scale of rooms will be available. And the hotel will also have some outdoor patio and some nice ambience for people to get relaxed. The project cost, we're looking at about $22, $23 million total, you know, in the hotel and the truck stop. And then, I'll just open up so you can see it. So this is the site plan, it's like a layover on the area. As you can see right now, it's a cornfield and some, you know, the background, I think there used to be some old restaurant here years ago on the corner. It's only, they only have foundation right now. So this is where I'm trying to build this. Okay, so this is a site plan. As you can see, close to the living room is our C-store, you know, with the pumps in the front, and then trucks in the back with the truck parking and the overnight parking. And then the hotel will be all the way in the back with some, you know, heavy landscaping around it, you know, so that way everything, you know, would, you know, would not disturb too much to the surroundings. And, you know, there's a detention punch which will be required by the code. And then, you know, this is what it will look like after this is done. There'll be, you know, some high-rise signs and some signage to put the gas signs and things like that. So, you know, I mean, the Holiday Inn comes in, then this picture would not be there, which is important, but I think the concept is there. As you can see, the hotel, you know, this is almost, it's the same franchise, so it will be, you know, same nice canopy, you know, the entrance, the landscaping around it, the parking, and then, you know, the building blocks will be the same four-story in a similar type. These are the elevations, so, you know, it's part of the hotel, the elevation, so you can skip it to the pictures. And these are some of the pictures, so the hotel lobby, the guest rooms, the registration, some of the breakfast, as you can see right now, some more. The hotel will have a spa and the pool, you know, and then a fitness center and a business center for the guests to use. You know, these are the room amenities, you know, the standing showers, with the vanity with the, you know, all the things in there, and along with the rooms will have a coffee maker, microwave, and a refrigerator. And, you know, this is about the hotel, you know, try to make it simple for the booking, you know, design the room for sound sleep, you know, provide good breakfast, and, you know, make everybody happy, so we are happy. These are the, some of the pictures for the travel center. You know, so this is the actual elevation that will look like, you know, the two-story elevation. You know, has a patio in the front, there will be a service door for the three restaurants so that they can come out and, you know, sit. Normally, you don't have too many of the winter, you know, summer months, but I think every six months, eight months out of the year, we can use this patio and fire pit. This is a floor plan. So basically, it's a C-store, you know, I tried to keep it half and half, so the first floor, the half of the first floor is given for the three restaurants and the seating. There'll be about 50 or maybe 60 sitting, you know, to serve the three restaurants. The Dunkin' owner has a drive-through window, and the other two restaurants, you know, would not have one. With the door, they can use the patio, you know, with the regular C-store, we will have some bathrooms to serve the transient guests, you know, with all the C-store, you know, the needs and the coolers and walk-in coolers and some storage space and everything else. This is the second floor. As you can see, the cross mark in the front will be like looking down from the, from the second floor to first, so it will be a two-story lobby. You know, when you walk in, you will see like open to the second floor, same thing, second floor would, you know, look down open, and then the rest will be used for, you know, the second floor. And you can see like both sides, we have bathrooms, along with that, you know, some place and storage area. And, you know, trying to put a bar in there, which will be only open for evening hours, you know, from like 5:00 to 8:00 or 9:00, you know, and then the rest will be all used as a cluster seating. I will have some, I have some pictures in the next slide, but, you know, if you can go back, just go back to the previous slide. As you can see, on the right-hand corner on the top, you know, there's a fitness center, the hot tub, and a sauna. So it will be like almost a spa-type, you know, the service, you know, for the truckers as well as, you know, anybody who wants to use it, you know. As a patron, you know, there'll be a charge, but, you know, they can use the shower, they can use all of this, you know, for one payment. So these are some of the picture slides for the C-store. As you can see, you know, the seating for the, you know, for the restaurants, bathrooms, and then some cooler space will be used on the walls, along the walls. Some more pictures of the spa and the sauna along with the fitness. There'll be a laundry for, you know, for the drivers, you know, the washers and dryers for the fine, you know, once they put the fine to work. Along with that, we have the bathrooms. And, you know, these are the pictures from my Hilton that I own in Bowling Brook. So I would bring that almost Hilton concept here into this truck stop. Some of the pictures, the bar pictures and seating, so I would bring me, you know, this type of seating into the second floor in the lobby area, you know, so it would look different than any other ordinary truck stop. Some more pictures. These are beverage bar and the retail, you know, the space, so the C-store will have all that. And then, you know, this slide is like I put together just to show the potential, you know, for the income stream. And it's multiple items that could, you know, that could be, you know, the potential for the revenue anywhere from, you know, inside C-store sale from the video, to the video gaming, the gasoline, you know, the tax, alcohol tax, you know, what else? Can, we don't have the slide, we cannot read it. So, but anyway, so like, you know, the parkings, the hotel revenue, you know, there's a hotel room tax, you know, that Piaton has. So, you know, all in all, this is, you know, along with the two real estate, you know, that, you know, will be there. And, you know, it will be about, you know, million-plus dollar that will be generated for Piaton, you know, along with me making money, of course, you know. You know, this, another important thing I want to point out is that this, the whole venture would, you know, generate about 65-plus jobs, you know, between the hotel and the travel center. And most likely, you know, this will be all, you know, the local help that will be looking for. So it will make, you know, the help for the community. I think it's the same duplicate slide, so, I think you can skip that. There's the hotels in the area, I was going to bring the point that if you go from Bradley to I-80, you know, all the hotels that, you know, there is no good, you know, the solid brand like Holiday Inn Express, you know, I mean, Bradley has a lot of hotels, and it's a, it's a different market because they have a lot of things to offer. You know, overall, the exit is like, you know, completely different than what we have here. You know, trying to build something, you know, I'm the first one going there, but I think eventually, you know, this will, you know, change the whole, you know, perspective of this interchange, you know, you know, with, you know, this development. I believe this is going to be a good development for town as well as for me, and eventually you will see all four corners getting developed and, you know, and some restaurants maybe come, you know, and I think it will be good for, you know, for the Piaton. If you have any questions, you're not here to answer.
Okay, people in the audience, attendees, and if there's any objectors, you will get a chance to talk. Right now, we're going to have the people from the commission actually ask questions of Mr. Patel. Anybody has anything?
I do. One of the first questions I have is, the ones that you do own, or do you own those, or you just building them and then selling them off?
No, I, for the last one year, I probably have sold two businesses. So I mostly, I own.
So the truck stop that you own in Bowling Brook, that you have and you operate?
Yes, and it was built from ground up, and I did that in 2016. So it's been, you know, open and operating for, you know, a good three years, three years in the next couple of months.
How do you feel that, I mean, you have a lot of competition with building that here because you do have Moni and everything else. But I realize you're offering a nice place, it all looks really good, but the access that we have off of there, obviously you're well aware of, it's pretty complex there getting on and off the highway. Isn't anything near the exits that they have, you know, at Stonkell Road and Moni and stuff like that, so how do you feel that's going to?
I think we did, you know, the Wildart asked me to do a traffic study. It was done by a third-party, you know, the Schwartz Engineering. You know, they did the traffic study and, you know, and then we submitted, and based on their recommendations, we are improving, you know, the road to a four-lane road.
Understood, yeah.
You know, as far as the ramp and the, and 57, that's I-DOT.
I understand that.
I don't think, you know, it would ever happen.
I know, and that's my concern, is because there's been so much expense put at Stonkell Road and the new one that they put at Moni, at, in Bourbon A there, you know, would cause them to want to do that here in Piaton. Obviously, it needs it, and I'm worried about the stacking getting off of 57, you know, and trucks turning and all the stacking going down there, because everybody's going to be making a right-hand turn if they're coming from north or south and coming across there. That's the concern I have. Do we have that study here?
I think, it was, I think-
Was it part of the package?
No.
No?
The study was, you know, based on their recommendation, you know, by doing the turn lanes on the, on the 88 and Wilmington, the Wilmington Road.
Yeah, I see that. That's pretty clear.
Yeah, you know, I think that's what their suggestion was, and I, you know, Wildart is okay with that. In fact, they don't want the signal there. They are saying that because it's a state route, they don't want to have the traffic
Yeah, there's no, how's that going to be for trucks exiting there and with no traffic light or no, you know, getting out onto there with no light? That could be pretty difficult. I mean, if you pull out a semi there and there's no stoplight there, you're asking that there be no, they don't want a stoplight there?
They don't want a stoplight. This is what they are, you know, they-
Stop sign, maybe?
Sign, yeah, sign is always there.
Yeah.
Sign will be there, there is no point, I mean, you know, whoever wants to come out from my development to the Wilmington, you know, there will be a four-lane, even 88 will be a four-lane road. So there'll be a whole middle section, you know, there will be all the stacking, you know, for left and right turns. And then when you're coming out, you know, there will be, you know, the left turn lane, the right turn would be the right turn lane. So there's, it's a complete, you know, the four-legged improvement on the intersection.
The pictures that you show in here are the one that you have in Bowling Brook, pretty much. And how closely are you going to keep that? Well, I have concerns that, you know, this all looks really good, but then if you go and build something here, is it going to be this? What guarantees do you have?
Well, see, Bowling Brook is not even close. Bowling Brook, I have it in the three-acre. I have zero truck parking.
I'm not saying, I'm saying basically the amenities that you have into the buildings and everything else that you have there, and the, all the materials that you use on the inside of them, they all look real nice, it's a nice layout, it looks very good, but I'm concerned, but, you know, obviously, this goes ahead and pushes forward, is that actually what you're going to do?
It is going to be, yes. This is why I want to get, you know, a little bit, you know, a bit different than the ordinary truck stop, that's why I started my comment with that, that this is what my vision is to do it. And like, you know, the hotels, you know, that I'm in the business, you know, the both hotels were done ground up, you know, I did as a developer, so I do this, you know-
Right, I just don't want to see something like that be, you know, approved and down the road, and then it gets built on the cheap and it's completely different than what we're showing.
There is no point for me to put a second floor.
What guarantees do we have with that, though? Could we write in some, if something like that, I mean, what it all comes down about? Obviously, this is just for zoning, but, you know, when that comes down, we want to-
Right, you're going to be looking next on the agenda, you're going to be looking at preliminary site plan review.
Sure.
And you're going to be looking at special use permit.
Right.
So, you can-
Just a general question, you know?
You can look at conditions in your special use down the line here, when you get down the agenda a little further, you can, if you look at your preliminary site plan, you'll see some planning comments in there, so during the building permit phase, you know, we can, we can be reviewing those in detail.
The Bowling Brook site that you have, is that the only other truck stop that you have at this point right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, like, my point is like, you know, if I were to just do the regular, you know, ordinary truck stop, I don't need to go second floor.
Right.
So that's why, you know, so, you know, my vision is there, and this will be, whatever I'm showing right now, this will be there.
Sure.
You know, this is what I want to get the advantage and edge over the big players that, you know, they're getting like most of the market share, which is, you know, the TA, the pilot, the Petro, the Loves, those four, five guys, you know? You know, the only way I can win over those guys is by, you know, spicing it up.
Okay, that's-
This is going to be another half million dollar more for this, you know, for me, you know, to do this kind of stuff. It won't be cheap, you know, and I, I cannot just simply build it, spending $10 million and go and do this, because there are people-
Well, one of the big concerns I have is just building something like that and selling it off. If you're saying that you're going to hang on to it, that's different than you still own the one in Bowling Brook.
No, there's no plan to sell it.
If you did go, if it does go with the Holiday Inn, that still is going to be a four-story hotel, that wouldn't change?
Yeah, it would still-
It would stay the same?
I have to do some market analysis, because they were saying that maybe the 90 room is a little bit too much, you know, do about 80 rooms. So if that footprint fits, it might be a three-story 80 room.
Okay, so that would shoot it down.
But it will be still, I think the 80 room is more than, you know, 76 to 80 rooms, that's what it calls in, because it could do the bigger meeting space and all that. I think this community would appreciate bigger meeting space than having four extra rooms, I think, you know?
Understood.
So, yeah, you know, so that's what, so about 80 room would be three-story if you don't need the whole four-story, you know, depending on how we can figure it out.
I see that you have a bar area there that would be in there, and, I mean, some of these questions probably don't purten, this is just zoning, but they're just things that I want to ask, anyway. The bar area that you have in there, would they, you said they wouldn't be cooking food on-site?
No food, food will be on the restaurant, the first floor.
Okay.
The three restaurants will be cooking, the bar is just a bar, you know?
Bar is just a bar?
Yeah.
They're all good questions, because, I mean, obviously, before we move forward, we need to understand exactly what this is going to be.
Right, we're going to get into, and that just, some don't purten, but in the big picture, it does purten. Sightage, so I understand the sightage that you're going to have there on the building, but what sightage are you going to have, or are you to attract up at 57, and how is that going to?
Like one of the traditional signs that, you know, usually you see it, maybe, you know, it was, I think it's like 95 feet, you know, the high-rise sign for the, for all the restaurants and everything.
Okay.
It won't be electronic, so it will be a big sign, you know, that will be like visible from both sides.
Okay.
In the site plan application, the engineers got a remark in there about, you know, needing to get a permit for that.
Sure, that's obviously something that has to-
Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
And that all has to, you know, fit and just, that's all I got.
Any else? Ken?
Nope. He answered my question about the stacking on Wilmington-Piaton, that's my biggest concern, is the traffic concerns.
That's my biggest concern, too, is the traffic.
All of it, it sounds, it's great, but I'm just concerned with that. And then, I guess if we didn't have so much work already done over at Stonkell Road and the one over there, you know, is I-DOT going to make an investment? They've already made such a huge investment.
Well, unfortunately, the way they operate is they go by those traffic studies, and the traffic needs to be there before they do something.
Well, the one in Bourbon A, there was, there's nothing there yet.
Well, yeah, that was, that was probably a little different situation.
And the one at Stonkell Road doesn't have anything there yet either, so they just really built that getting ready for something, so.
Yeah.
The, excuse me, the only, the issue that I have is it done after the fact with I-DOT, and that's basically what they did with Moni, and that's a mess.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, that's the reason that I say this, because, you know, it's something we have to deal with down the road. And they're going to have to address it at some point.
Right, I mean, you have, you have to think, if there's semi trucks backing up out onto the interstate, that that becomes a safety issue.
Sure.
And has to be addressed.
Yeah, and that's not something that we, we can't curtail, we can't put down something because of that, you know, and wait for I-DOT to do something, you know. I understand, but it has to be done ahead of time, and then, okay, you guys have to do something.
Right.
Then that brings up the other question, too, is, happens, can we annex all this, land into it? What's going to happen when they don't have room to put this over there, to put the ramp out further like they have at Stonkell Road and everywhere else, because this is now going to be too close? That was the one, really the one concern that I kind of had.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think that's something that engineering probably has to look at and consider. And also, when we look at the preliminary site plan review, it's very preliminary. I mean, you know, the engineer has comments in there about drainage and runoff, and when you look at the present site plan, there's detention, but, you know, I don't know if all the calculations have been made, maybe that may change a little bit.
Yeah, this is, this is just a point, it hasn't been said to any engineering yet, though, has it?
No.
No.
And they're looking at right away an easements requirement, so.
Sure. After, yeah. You don't have to do it all the time, so, I understand all that. Okay. That's, questions are answered.
Okay, anybody else?
How many parking spaces do you have at your location for overnight truck?
I only have car parking, there is no truck parking.
At your truck stop?
Yeah, it's, what do you call, it's a truckers-friendly gas station, I call it, but I go through, you know, hundreds of trucks, and, you know, we are okay. They park in the parameters and come in and use the facility, you know, there's two restaurants inside, a Dunkin' owner, and a steak restaurant, you know, and, you know, seems like it's working without any parking, but, you know, it's a little bit of a difference. So, and I said it's a truck stop, I mean, it's a truck, I'm serving the trucks, you know, we do good volume diesel there, you know, there's a lot- So, and I said it's a truck stop, I mean, it's, it's a truck, I'm serving the trucks, you know, we do good volume diesel there, you know, there's a lot of trucks comes and goes, you know, we also have a good C store, and, you know, I think he's putting it up right now. So this is, you know, this is what, you know, I have the front side of the store, that's my inside, this is where the trucks are, and, you know, there is no parking for trucks, so it's just the one truck parked on the side. So like, they park, they come in and they, they go, you know? Sometime we get to the point that it's getting jammed, so we go out and, you know, help them, you know, to release the traffic. The gas side, you know, is okay, we got about, you know, about fifteen some parkings, you know, and I have some employee parkings on the side. So all the C store, you know, is okay, the trucks is only, you know, so sometimes they just park on the lane, you come in, you know, even though they are not treating it up, you know? But that's why I did the forty-five transient parking here, so, you know, it's a little bit different, and this is well thought out and well planned, you know?
So there's no overnight truck parking at that one?
Over there, there is no.
And you've got about two-hundred-and-sixty total spaces for overnight truck parking here?
Two-seventeen.
Plus the forty-five transient?
Yeah, that's transient, so, I mean, somebody might be there for a few hours, yes, but, you know, I would not refer them to park overnight there.
I looked at some of the other truck stops in the region, pretty much statewide. I didn't see anybody who could handle that many trucks and their numbers. Moni, only this they're showing is a hundred-and-ninety. Is there anybody who has that many overnight parking spaces close to here?
No, did you see the Moni every night or no?
I'm just going off of what they advertise as of one-hundred-and-ninety overnight parking.
So, you know, I mean, it's a true, it's a, it's a, it's a land available, so I did it, I mean, you know, there is otherwise that, you know, if it, if it doesn't get used, it will be there. You know, if it gets used, it's fine, but what I'm gonna do, I cannot put another restaurant or another hotel at, at this point. It might come on, come in and play later on or something, you know? Or I can carve out and sell it, but, you know, this, this was the initial thought, you know, behind the thing, because, you know, I cannot ask the, to cut the land. So we have like two parcels, two, you know, contracts, I have them right now, and it's adding up to like twenty-five acre, twenty-six acres, so, you know, that's what we did, you know?
I was just curious to know, you know, why two-hundred, roughly two-hundred-and-sixty total? That's a lot of trucks.
Yeah, it is, but, you know, I mean-
I definitely have traffic concerns like everybody here. It's, it's bad now. If you're on it at five, if you're on it between four and five now on that ramp, it, it's cars that are stacking up. You throw a couple of trucks in there, and you definitely have it, so it's, it's going to happen. This is a very nice designed place. It will be busy, it will attract people, and we will see trucks stacked up on the expressway, there is no doubt. So the only way for them to get in there.
Yeah, most times this, parking, overnight parking won't be, like, they won't be going out at the same time, so it will be dispersed, you know, as they get in the morning, get ready, with the road, you know? So it will be, you know, maybe a different time, a different span, you know, but I understand, you know, your point, where hopefully it won't be like all the two-hundred trucks will be living at the same time, you know?
Well, it, it won't take two-hundred to back it up, and it doesn't take many out there, but it's, that ramp just does not hold a lot of trucks, and it's, it's, it's a pretty scary interchange all the way around, going north and south, so. That, that's my biggest concern about. I think you have a beautiful plan here. They will come when you build this. People will be on all four corners eventually as well, because it's needed, and if we annex this place, I'm sure more people will come forward and wanna annex their property now that we're gonna have utilities over there, so. It's not only your location there, it's, there will be more to come, and there will be more traffic, so that's something that will need to be addressed, I think, and only make decisions on it.
That's something we have no control over at all.
Yeah, yeah, I Dot's, they don't, they don't have money to just build bridges because it's gonna be busy, you know?
Yeah.
They, they just don't work like that. Everything gets built way after the fact, so.
Well, you can't say that, because that's not everything.
No.
If you go to Stunkel Road, I mean, that's the point they just brought up.
That's true, but nothing, nothing was around there, though, when that started. That was pretty open all around it. You do have some development around it.
And then they put those interchanges in, you know, they put them in, there wasn't, there wasn't anything like there is now.
No.
So, it's, I Dot has their own plan, you know, and you, well-
Hey, that's what I'm saying.
It has nothing to do with what you want.
Well, and like you said, Steve, it's so backwards, though, when you go to Stunkel Road, there's no traffic going to the west.
There's nothing there.
But you come to Piattone, there's a zillion cars going west of Wilmington.
Bradley one, and there isn't much there right now.
Not right now, yeah. There could be, though, there, but the Stunkel Road, it's, it's a dead end, I mean, it's going nowhere.
Well, there's no utilities on that west side, you know? Green Garden has the capacity to bring utilities to there, but they haven't done it yet.
But, yeah, it just seems strange that they invested, you know, hundreds of millions in doing that and just kinda sitting there, you know, when it could've been needed somewhere else. Anyway, but that's unfortunate, we have no control over that. We can't, we can't stymie our going forward building on their, on the premise that, you know, we're gonna wait for them to do that first, because they won't do it first.
No.
Especially now, with them investing in two interchanges, they're just gonna run over and do that, unless they're forced to.
Well, when it becomes a safety issue, I think, I think they have to.
Right, when it's, when they're forced to-
Unfortunately, the problem's already there, though, so.
Right, and it hasn't been addressed.
I mean, all we can do is make a big deal out of it.
Right.
You know?
During the, this design phase of this, of these off-site improvements for this project, the village engineers will be involved, and they will be doing the design engineering, and so they will be the ones applying for the permits for these with Will Dot and with I Dot, so they will be on the front lines there and working with them, so they will be, you know, making these concerns known. And as, you know, the development moves further down into the engineering, where we have a more specific onsite engineering and, you know, some of the construction engineering and design engineering for the off-site improvements are a little bit more defined, you know, we, we will have some more definitive feedback from the, you know, from I Dot and from Will Dot, so I think we can, you know, kind of bring these concerns to them a little bit more, although, you know, and have a little bit more specifics. You know, they did the traffic study and they didn't have a lot of, you know, specific information.
Yeah, question, I mean, this gets annexed in, do we, do we annex this in on the contingent that this gets approved by the Rollins Engineering and everything else, or no?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
I think, you know, that was-
That's what I wanted, I bet that's what I would want.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So that can be done.
So that could be the stipulation, then?
Right.
We can guarantee, you know, what I Dot or Will Dot will do, as you've been saying, we don't have any control over them, but we, we definitely don't, we want, the condition would be that we approve the preliminary site plan based on, you know, final engineering plans and final plans.
Well, and like I said, with the preliminary site plan, it's very preliminary, so if we say okay to it, it's gonna be a preliminary okay.
Okay.
You know, so at some point, we're gonna see that site plan back.
Because he's already said that if he changes hotels, it's gonna go from forty-five thousand to sixty thousand square feet, that's gonna change that corner-
Right.
To begin with.
Right.
Just change the floor, probably, you know?
But when you look at that, you know, the Robinson Engineering has already looked at it, and, you know, they haven't, they don't have any reasons why it, it won't work on that site. They just have a bunch of concerns that need to be addressed, just like we're talking-
Easements, sort of all that.
Yeah, just like we're talking about right now, you know, there's just so many things. Okay.
I just wouldn't want that land to be, you know, then, it's annexed and it's done, and if everything falls through and it doesn't go through, I think that doesn't need to be annexed.
That wouldn't happen.
Good enough.
Okay, so now, any of the attendees, if you're an objector, just kinda hang on, you'll have your, you'll have your say. But any of the people in the audience, if you have any questions for Mr. Patel or for, for the commission, now's the time? Yes, ma'am?
Look back the site plan? Do you, no, have a particular slide you wanna look at?
Well, it's that kind of showing the parking spaces, so there's the gas station, the hotel.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll show this one here, and you probably-
Well, here's this one here, either that one or my next page.
Yeah.
That one?
The next page or that one?
That's it.
That one, Mark.
Okay.
Okay, now-
Or that one?
And just so everybody knows, everybody's familiar with where this site's at, and those of you that have been around as long as me or longer know that the hen house used to be out there. And so that's the smaller parcel, but there's a, there's a parcel to the north of that that's also included on this site plan, and those two parcels will add up to the twenty-six acres.
So that'll be, so then, oh, I'm deciding, it doesn't really matter. There'll be a stop sign, there'll be a stop.
So what, besides widening eighty-eighth avenue, what other off-site improvements are you doing?
The Wilmington Road would be-
Will that be a four-way stop then, or?
Yes.
Okay, will it be a four-way stop?
Four-way stop along with the, you know, it will be, well, it will have a turning lane, the left turn, right turn, you know, so it will be like, you know, right now is like just the one-way traffic, so it will be four-lane road.
So that's gonna be widened there and a four-way stop, what you're saying? That was not in our notes anywhere? I was not aware there was gonna be a four-way stop.
No, I don't.
I agree.
It's-
I thought it was just on, but it is. How far will be four lanes out of there?
Just where that green area is.
Just a couple, few blocks past.
Okay, I got it.
Up to the hotel.
And the trucks gonna be coming in half, or will we have a road on that, or Piattone will interrupt, or both?
No, it could be just a, yeah, from the, yeah, yeah.
And they can't meet on the-
Yeah, so like, you know, as you see that, that's a-